The Managed School Board to Order. And with that, moving right along to Nutrition Services Report.
Thank you, Chairperson Reedman and members of the board. Tonight is a continuation of our discussion which was tabled on Monday evening regarding Food and Supplies RFP number 53017. We got some excellent detailed information from Gail Schmidt to help us maneuver through any discussions. But just in brief, talking points from what was said last night. Mount Angel has been a part of the Oregon Child Nutrition Coalition Purchasing Group since approximately 1999. It's also known as OCNC. They have a five-year pricing agreement with Cisco. But the district brings the contract between the distributor, which is Cisco, and the district to the board for annual approval. OCNC completes this RFP process only once every five years. The OCNC RFP process takes approximately an entire year to complete. OCNC takes care of the procurement process. They set price agreements with vendors. And it's especially helpful for our small district as procurement requirements are very demanding. Some of the benefits to being part of OCNC are a reduction in our costs. Higher volumes that allow the distributor to provide us with special pricing and quicker turnaround on orders. And another item of note, renewal over a four-year period, I believe, is a better option as the RFP process takes approximately an entire year to complete. So I've been recommending tonight that the district award the 2021-2022 Food and Supply RFP to Cisco Portland, and I'm also recommending extending the award for the next four years.
Further discussion or someone just want to make a motion? And the language for the motion is at the bottom of our sheet here. Thank you for gathering that additional detailed information. And thanks to Gail for doing that for us.
I recommend a motion to approve the district award of the 2122 Food Supply RFP for 53017 to Cisco.
There's more languages.
Read the whole thing?
Yeah.
I recommend the acceptance of products, award added to the buying list as approved through each of the subsequent RFPs. I also recommend the award be extended for each of the next four years based on the increase in product prices being at or below the Bureau of Labor Statistics CPI Inflation Calculator in March of the previous school year.
Moved and seconded discussion. Thank you, everyone. We'll go to the vote, all in favor. All right, passes the unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is just revisiting board superintendent agreements. As we continue our work with Steve and meetings together, Rachel and I thought it would be a nice opportunity just to remind ourselves of what we agreed to as part of our board superintendent operating agreements that was adopted at our September meeting. And we just provided another copy of the operating protocol for school board members that we approved in January of this year. And just two issues that I have seen start creeping that I wanted to just address in front of the entire board. One, it's not really in writing specifically anywhere. And during our board work together and our discussions, we have made an agreement to do the best we can to ask questions of Rachel ahead of the meetings if possible, knowing that during the meetings, of course, we can ask questions get further clarification on things. And so I just wanted to remind us that that is something that we discussed. And we all thought, yeah, that's something I can do. And again, knowing that it can't happen every time and asking everyone to be thoughtful about raising questions ahead of time if you can. And one of the unintended consequences, I think, of asking a lot of questions that are further down in the weeds details, it makes us appear unprepared. And it might make our superintendent, speaking for Rachel, it might make our administrators feel like they're underperforming, if that makes sense. So it's this balance of getting enough information to be confident that we're moving forward, that we can support what's in front of us, but also being respectful and when we can't ask any questions. So I just wanted to make that observation as we've been moving head and knees.
If I could add to that, I'd say also that it will be a better view for citizens. If we are, as we are on board, but we're actually qualified staff, staff or a superintendent, yes, we have her director, but she's doing all the work. If we want to play stump the chump, then we hold questions as long as we can and sock it to her. But if we really aren't here, as we have proven over the last four months, to be a group that's working towards success for the Mount Angel School District. And we want that to show to our citizenry, then we would do that work ahead of time and make those questions so they could be answered in that forum for success, for a good appearance for all, but really so that quality work can be done on a reasonable timeline. And if you need to, if somebody needs to get a onesie for something someday, then do it offline. But this isn't the time to do that.
Thank you. And one other, I guess, continuation of what John mentioned is I had a thought, it was a good one. It was going to be, it was going to be really, a really good one. Oh, so I know. So when one board member does ask a question that does require follow-up afterwards and work by, you know, Rachel and our administrators, I've advised Rachel that shouldn't be a huge priority for Rachel and the administrators. If it was a question that was from one board member and maybe more of curiosity than than other intentions. And so it's that, again, it's that push-pull and trying to make sure that we're setting everyone up for success, including us. And again, not encouraging us to be silent and not ask questions, just being a little more thoughtful about trying to ask some of the questions ahead of time if we know it's going to, you know, take some time to. Does that make sense? Any other comments about that? Okay. And then the other, the other piece that is in our agreements is that as board members, we really should be working directly with Rachel. And when we have questions between board meetings or even really technically during board meetings, although when an administrator is giving their report, we do ask questions directly to them. Questions really need to be sent out through Rachel as the superintendent. And so if you are needing information about something that's happening in the district, please go to Rachel first and don't go directly to other administrators.
You talked about like outside of a school board meeting, not like when they're presenting and you have a question about that.
When administrators are presenting for their buildings, yes, we can ask. Yeah, I encourage us to ask questions directly to administrators. And then in every other setting, the questions really should be sent out through Rachel. So, does anybody have questions? There's been a couple instances recently. Not a problem, but just again, just when I, when I as a board chair start hearing about or seeing a bit of creeping on what we've agreed to as our operating protocols, I want to have an open discussion. Anything to add from anyone, Rachel or any board members?
I would like to add that I appreciate what you've just mentioned because in my weekly reports that I send out to you, I know you want to be informed of what your colleagues are thinking. And if it doesn't funnel through me, then I can't connect it back to you so you can be transparent with each other. And that's really important to me.
And I also want to add, I think we're doing a great job of being collaborative, open with each other, open with Rachel, and being really attentive and thoughtful during our meetings. I'm impressed. I've been impressed with the school work for years and I continue to be impressed as membership and then flows changes, which is, I want to thank you all for being respectful of each other, respectful of staff and showing up to do the hard work. Anything else on that one? All right, thank you. Moving on to, Rachel is going to lead us through the strategic planning. And we have Steve here as helping out at times during this session. And yeah, so Rachel's going to be the lead.
Yes, I'm going to get us started. And I just want to begin by acknowledging Director Brendan. Yes, there are 56 pages, but if you like only about 20. If you would prefer to do the hard copy and/or if you're just someone who likes to take notes. Either option that works for you. I think it's important for you to know that I'm very passionate about this work. I'm very enthusiastic about this work. And I've been championing it a bit for almost three months now to share this with you. So I'll try and contain myself. Normally I would be up and moving around a lot, but because we're being recorded, I'm going to try and behave and sit in my chair. And I will make sure that we get enough breaks when needed, since there are 56 slides. We do have some objectives that I'm hoping that we get through tonight. One is to review school board and superintendent areas of focus, which Steve Kelly is going to take us through. Gain a big picture perspective on strategic planning, the purpose, different models, and fundamental elements. Become familiar with the strategic planning process. Understand the role of board members as related to the process here in Mount Angel. And understand local phases and timeline in our planning process. So that's what we're aiming for tonight. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Steve Kelly from our last meeting.
Rachel, thank you very much. Rachel, I've had a couple of great sessions preparing for tonight. It's been great to hear the process, hear the passion around the process, the experience that she brings with this process. And what Rachel's asked me to do is kind of build the context for a lot of the detail and a lot of the things that she's going to share with you tonight. And so at your place, you'll see this one pager and it's got your collaborative governance definition at the top. And you've seen that before. And just about every single thing that you're going to hear about tonight, see tonight, can be attached to this definition of collaborative governance. And before I even go there, kudos to you for acknowledging the creep that might be working towards things that you may not have agreed to in your operating agreement that you don't wait until it becomes a problem because it doesn't sound like it was a problem. It was just, hey, we're starting to move in this direction. Let's talk about it. Let's bring it out in the open. Holy cow, I wish I could bottle you guys, sell you, and I would be a rich, rich man. Okay. Because there's way too many boards right now that are not having that conversation. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for being such a great role model for that because it's just not happening. So keep it up.
Yeah, I was going to ask, anything happening in those few school boards?
Nothing, you know, I'm pretty much, very little to do. You guys keep it up and I won't have anything to do. But and that's the definition of collaboration, really. And so anyway, back to the definition because I know Rachel's got a lot of stuff that she wants to share tonight. But remember inside this definition around collaborative governance, partnerships are important. And we've talked about how a board as a whole partners with their superintendent. There's going to be a lot of that tonight because you're going to hear your role is big picture strategic direction. Whereas Rachel's role is more operational and the strategic planning. But they go hand in hand. It's a partnership. You really can't separate the two per se. The other partnership is among yourselves. Again, you demonstrated that a moment ago by talking about how you're going to work together. And the third partnership that's implied here is with your community. And one of the things that you're going to hear inside of Rachel's process is that community engagement piece. So partnerships are at the heart of what we talk about here. But the big piece tonight is that phrase called shared focus. How do you develop that shared focus? What is it? And of course, in this definition, it's on student learning. But what is it for Mount Angel? And that's what this process is going to bring into play. It's going to sharpen that focus. It's going to make it very clear what your strategic direction is. And then underneath that, what are the steps? What are the goals? What are the things that Rachel's going to operationalize to get there? But that shared focus on student learning piece of this definition is at the heart of the strategic planning that you're going to be talking about. And then it goes on to talk about collective responsibility and accountability. We'll talk about that probably more towards the end. What's the board's role in terms of monitoring the overall direction? What's the superintendent's role in terms of monitoring, holding people accountable and so forth and so on? I also just wanted to briefly touch on, and the reason collaborative governance, that definition even exists is because of the original research on effective schools. And that's what the Lighthouse Project is there. You see the five roles and I've really touched on those already. You see those within the definition. So this is a researched-based definition. The other thing that I brought tonight that I'm just going to lead with you and sometime, and we'll talk maybe a little bit more about it at the end of Rachel's presentation, are these 12 standards. So the original Lighthouse research has been expanded. There've been multiple studies and the 12 standards kind of expand on and go into more detail. Again, not our role really to be there tonight. Mine is just to build the context for Rachel's presentation in just a moment. But you do have a handout there. You can read it, you can go through it. But our new board self-assessment tool is based on those 12 standards of balance, what Tom Allsberry called balanced governance. Because boards can be either two hands-on or they can be two hands-off. Now, I know some superintendents, not Rachel, but there are some superintendents in the state that would just absolutely put their hand over my mouth when I say that you can be two hands-off. All right. But rubber stamp boards or non-existent boards are just as detrimental as those that micromanage. You want to find that balance, that sweet spot, that collaboration. So anyway, the 12 standards are there. You can read those and we can certainly talk about them at a later date. And when it comes time for you to do that self-assessment as a board, I'm strongly encourage you to use our instrument. So I want to take just a minute and talk about strategic direction versus strategic planning. It is the role of the board to establish the big picture, what I call priorities. Now, some people call goals, but I try not to use that term because goals, smart goals, really are the operational side of what Rachel does in strategic planning. I like to call the board not goals, but priorities or direction. So in this process that you're going to see outlined in just a few moments, there's going to be opportunity for you through a lot of engagement and looking at data and talking with folks to create some direction for the district. And we're calling that strategic direction or priorities. You hand that off to the superintendent and she will then operationalize that with the strategic plan. So it's important that we kind of understand the difference between the two. Sometimes they get tossed around. Strategic planning is the entire enchilada. And again, I try to divide that out a little bit. So district goals are those goals inside the strategic plan and they're for everybody. Now, when it comes time for a board, you will create your own goals, what I call board goals, that are for just the board to accomplish. The board goals should be in support of the district goals. Now, many times those terms are used interchangeably, and so that's why I draw it to your attention. But district goals, in my opinion, are different than board goals. And then the third one here is superintendent goals. When it comes time in Rachel's evaluation and she creates goals, they either come out of her evaluation and/or they are in support of the district goals. So just some terminology so that we're all kind of on the same page. But the big concept to take away, and I'm going to turn it over to Rachel to continue this. And she's given me the liberty of being able to kind of step in and say, and here's where the board's role would be X, Y, and Z in this process. So we're kind of doing a duo here, although she's going to do all the heavy lifting. So she's responsible for all 56 pages. I'm responsible for one page, just so you know, if you're counting, you know. It was, it was so funny. It was just Mark and Rachel early before the board meeting and Mark made that observation. And Rachel's response was priceless. It was like, yeah, I mean, there was like, no, no excuse, no way she can spin it. It was just like, yeah, you're right. That was good. All right. Questions about that? Again, it's a very brief, most of this you know, we've talked about. But I wanted to kind of set the stage for you to look for the board's role versus the superintendent's role. Okay, so no questions, Rachel?
And before you take it away, Jill, do we have anybody participating remotely? Because I was going to say hello and welcome. All right, thank you.
It can happen with 56 pages. Someone might.
Slides, just slides.
There's slides. There's only.
I think you will find that I'm very brief on each slide. So.
It was an observation.
It's a good observation. There we go. Okay. So I'm just curious because you've all come onto the board at different times. What your experiences have been with strategic planning and not necessarily school district strategic planning. And it could be local government or an organization of some kind or business. So I'm just curious to know for each of you, whether you're new or at it somewhat familiar or you're very experienced. And we can go in order or you could just popcorn out.
I'm between B and C.
You're what?
Between B and C.
A lot of this with military, most of it was sit there, take it on and suck it down. I did have the opportunity a couple of times to be in, somewhere in the middle of it, to be doing some training and actually learning, doing. But most of my, in the military 90s up to 2000, this was coming out of all the time and it was like, everybody must sit in the big bedroom. Go, all right, you'll do this and you will write this down and it is yours. So I have a lot of familiarity with the terms and I am acquainted with the process. I truly think that, well, I was shocked and grateful. When we, the stuff that we had, I checked it. I couldn't believe you guys were actually paying attention. And we kept on sticking to it all the way through, even through COVID. It was better done than the military ever did. And so I think I end up with, I have a confidence I could sit in this class and this and participate as a reasonable participant.
Thank you.
I would say, you know, in some ways like B, maybe a little more than a B. But I mean, I kind of can connect it to just maybe even in the classroom where it's long-range planning and, you know, how this is going to work with the different students and, you know, my teaching and changes I may have to make over the years. But it's just kind of along that line. And just, you know, from being here, this is like my third year. And so I know that, you know, we were talking about it a lot, strategic planning, where are we at on it? Reports that come out and that sort of thing. And then with COVID having to kind of put it on the back burner somewhat, you know, like the exact goal. So B, maybe a little bit higher, could be about there.
Thank you.
I would say B as well. A teacher within the school, within the school district, they hear about strategic plan, how we're going to get there and the steps we're going to take.
I would say I'm C. Part of my role in my, in my paid job is to facilitate strategic planning at Cloughmas County. And I led the efforts for the county to update. We have 22 departments, so 22 plans. I helped facilitate about eight of them within the last few years, so I'm pretty experienced.
Okay. This tells me I could go somewhat rapid fire through, through part of the presentation or maybe most of it. Thank you very much for sharing with me. That just gives me better perspective. So you're going to find that the concepts are going to spiral, but they're going to start with the big picture, the 30,000-foot, you know, what we see up higher. And what we're going to start with, the big picture, is the purpose, the different models, and the fundamental elements of strategic planning. So why would we do this work other than it's just, we hear it's a good idea to do it, right? Well, first of all, alignment, having a destination, collective responsibility, which Steve had mentioned just a few minutes ago, strengthening trust in our community and being able to move the organization forward. And when I say alignment, you could be working really hard and not be moving in the right direction. So it's important to get everybody in alignment. But it's also really important to know where you're going. You can be rowing really hard and everybody's in alignment, but you don't have a clue where you're trying to get to. If you don't know where you're going, you might not get there. So we want to make sure that everyone knows what the end result is supposed to be. Collective responsibility or ownership. For me, this is a very important one because it involves a lot of different stakeholders, possibly business owners or students or fundstrangers, parents, teachers, lunch service folks, food service folks. So all of this is collective responsibility. And then being able just to keep strengthening the trust that we have in our community because we're going to be asking for input and we're going to be responding. That makes it very transparent. And having a good strategic plan means that we're building on some common agreements and we know where we want to get there together. And the communication will be interactive. So all of those things together help us strengthen trust. And we want to be able to move the organization forward. Moving on is a process, moving forward is a choice. There's a slight difference between the two. Moving on is letting things happen. Moving forward is making things happen. You can have the best plan in the world and it'll be useless if you're not using it to move your organization forward. So to keep things moving and making them happen. So strategic planning models, there are a lot out there. And these are just some examples. And what you'll find is that they're all going to start grading together, which is why there's a grade at the bottom of that slide. There's basic standards, strategic planning, where you do long-term vision. Then that can be 20 to 30 to 40 years. Midterm goal setting, which could be three to five, or short-term, which might just be a year or two. Community-based planning and visioning, where residents' hopes and dreams for the community and what it looks like and how to get there. Strategic gap need analysis. What's the ideal outcome that we want and what's our current reality? Issue-based, we got a problem, how are we going to fix it? Let's put something together. And more governance council goal setting, determining policy priorities and aligning resources. And while, like I said, parts of all of those will be pulled into this process through a grade where we're really going to be focusing for the next eight months is on standard strategic planning and community-based planning and visioning intertwined with a little sprinkling of the others. So effective strategic plan processes have pretty common fundamental elements. It starts with being able to articulate the why, which we know is important. It starts with being able to articulate the why, which we know is important in any work that we do. If people don't understand the why, they usually won't take the next step. Make sure you've got it. You better just count on having a plan to plan. Start where you're at. Engage a team. Be bold. Narrow your priorities. Be specific. Take action. Align your resources and monitor.
And Rachel, what resonates with me in our district and also at Clackamas County, where, you know, I do this work similarly. And that aligning resources is just so important because if you have strong strategic direction, it's that lens you're always making decisions through, right? And your strategic plan is your roadmap on achieving what you have intended as your goals. You can set priorities and it's, it's an amazing prioritization tool because you can't do everything all the time for everyone, even though we want to. And so being able to look to a strong strategic plan and say, yeah, this is why we're choosing to fund this and not this. And for us as board members, I think that's just really helpful to be able to have that, again, roadmap and that lens to filter everything.
And I think it also would be very valuable when the crisis disures happening and you go, we've got to focus on this now, but we're able to go back or you're able to say, you know, we have, you have thought about that when we were in crisis. It came in as this, so let's make sure we want to really. And it's okay. I mean, everybody gets wrapped up about crisis and rightly so. That's why it's called a crisis. But this is what prudent people do is plan.
I appreciate the comments and being able to interact with each other. So I'm going to pause and just ask how my pacing is because I want to make sure you have the time to have dialogue with each other, and I'm going pretty quickly through these. So I want you to go, hey, you know, just do that, please. Thank you, Rachel. We're going to take a very brief look at each of these, and I do mean very brief. Starting with being able to articulate the why. We need to do that for buy-in in any kind of initiative that we are initiating. And we want people to know about the importance of this, again, showing transparency and strengthening our trust. So that's the why. And you better know in advance, you're going to have, plan to have a plan. It doesn't just happen. You need to know your details in advance. You need to know your communication plan in advance. You need to know all of the systems that are going to bring all of the pieces together because there are a lot of cogs that work in this process. And make sure that you also have a plan for sharing out and remaining visible after the strategic plan is built. Really important to start where you're at, and a lot of that acknowledges what's already happening here in Mount Angel. What is the voice? How can we give everybody voice and get a community pulse? How do we gather information? Not only data, which we will have a lot of coming at us, but also perspective that may be not quantitative but qualitative. And new learning can come our way. There might be things that we had not considered based on what other people, other stakeholders are sharing with us. Engage a team. And when I mean a team, I mean bringing together what Steve had referred to, and that's you coming together with a fleet of stakeholders to have robust discussion, robust data analysis, using a variety of tools and methods, and having good deep discussion, meaningful discussion, because the power is always in the discussion. Be bold. Think big, not small. Have a vision. Make sure you have your priorities. Make sure that it's challenging and worthwhile and aspirational. And that it's a direction that everybody should head toward. Narrow your focus. As Steve was saying, priorities are an extremely important part of the work that you will be doing. Being able to provide midterm direction because what we are looking at for Mount Angel is five years. At least that's been the historical precedent that's been set. Making sure that we can prioritize our resources and align our efforts. So when I go through some of the slides, you're going to start seeing a star come up on some of them, and that means, hey, that's you. So that's just a way of you connecting with what we're saying here. Like I said, this is an eight or so month process. I wouldn't expect you to be right in all parts of it, but there are certain parts that are critical for you. So whenever you see one of those stars, that's what it means. Fundamental elements. Be specific. And I remember that Director Conley just a couple of weeks ago had talked about SMART goals. Can't remember what it was, but it was a meeting that we had where you acknowledged SMART goals. That's what this is. Be specific. Have strategies that support defined outcomes, goals that support achieving the vision in a very specific timeframe. Taking action. Implement those strategies. Implement those tasks that support those strategies. Determine your available resources. Align your resources. That is not always just funding, of course. It's people, it's staff, it's materials, and most certainly time for everybody. And then monitor. Frequent, quantitative, and having the ability to adjust because it is frequent. What you see here is the big game. This is the big game. This is a scrimmage or a weekly football game and a daily practice. We don't want to monitor only during the big game once a year. That is not what we want. Although having data once a year has its place. What we want is to be able to do frequent check-ins during scrimmages and during practices that allow us to adjust and move further faster. So that was part one. That was 30,000 foot. Before I move on to the next section, which is just taking a closer look with glasses, are there any comments or thoughts on what was just shared? Steve, anything you want?
No, I get you.
All right, very well. So these next couple of slides are very important to me because they're going to be very important to you. Leadership style really matters when it comes to strategic planning, and there are some very important reasons why. You want a leader or a superintendent who's modeling their beliefs in the organization and providing a basis for a strategic framework. You want a leader who can successfully mobilize the organization so that you can execute the plan or so that we can execute the plan. And for a plan to be successful, there has to be commitment to seeing it through on a daily basis over the long haul. And all of those are interconnected. That's why leadership matters, and that's why it's important to have a strategic plan and a process that's a good fit for the person who's moving the plan forward. Does that make sense? So this, this is an interesting slide, and you're actually going to see it a couple of different times in this presentation. I so badly want to get out of my chair, but I'm not going to do that. This, you can't. That's true. There is nobody watching.
Really? It's all audio, so they can hear you.
Okay, excellent. So this is who I am as a leader. This is how I approach my professional learning of administrators. This is how I offer professional learning to our staff of classified and licensed. It's through this lens, mission, vision, values, and goals. And not just the labels of mission or vision, but really digging deeper into the why behind things. What is it that we want to accomplish? Values, not so much what we believe in our personal lives, but what do we have to do in order to achieve the vision and how are we going to mark our progress? But this is what I do on a daily basis. So for me, it makes a lot of sense to apply this particular framework to the process because, again, this is me on a daily basis. Does that make sense? So a closer look of what, where, who, what, how, when. I've shared some fundamental basic elements with you, and you'll probably see some of the same things. Again, like I said, this is going to spiral, but it still is worth noting as we close in how it gets more meaningful for us locally. So the what. The what is really developing common agreements that provide direction and move the organization forward. And for me, things that I've been working on since I arrived in July is listening and learning what needs to stop, what needs to remain, and what needs to start. And that plays a part here in this process. Who's part of this process? Certainly you. We wouldn't be sitting here tonight. Community members, and not just community members that may have family in the schools, but taxpayers who don't. It's really important. Staff, administrative licensed and classified. Students are an important part of this process, and having a strategic planning committee is important too as well. You're going to get more detailed information later, but here's a basic breakdown. November and December is different forms of stakeholder input. January through April, April, excuse me, is analyzing data, summarizing priorities. May is designing the plan and establishing goals and approving the plan. And then in June, district goals and board goals. But again, we'll take a closer look at that. So how are we going to do this here in Mount Angel? There are a lot of things that need to get done. Preparing, establishing a framework, which I showed you several slides ago. That's how I'm going to be approaching this process. Mission, vision, values, and goals. Being able to engage stakeholders, establish a committee, analyze data, identify priorities, and apply the framework. Both of those are essential. We need your leadership there. Complete the framework, which is the goals, and I'll talk more about why there's not a star there in just a few moments. Design a plan and monitor. Again, many of the same things that you see in the fundamental elements of all strategic plans. So the first part of the how is how we're going to prepare for this, or how, let me clarify that. How I am going to prepare for this. Good for you to know, just to reassure you. There's going to be a lot of communication and engagement. To the right side is a possible little quarter sheet that could go in a newsletter or something that could get set out on a blackboard. But we want to be using all forms of communication to let people know, hey, something's coming, and we want you to be part of this. And the timeline is a long one because, again, there are a lot of moving parts here, November through June. See, now, don't you feel better knowing that I didn't put the star on all those things, knowing that this goes through June? We've already seen this. We just saw it several slides back. The how about what specifically we're going to do to engage? We'll have a survey that will be open for all community members, not just Mount Angel School District families, to provide their input. We will have a community forum. I'll be doing school visits, and maybe you're welcome to join me when we get those scheduled. Staff dialogues. I want to make sure that I have at least one student leadership session so that I'm hearing students. And we have our strategic planning committee. So a little bit more about this committee. We've got to get the right people in the room. But to do that, first, we need you. We need community representatives. We need staff. We need parents. And when we think of those groups, it needs to be inclusive. And it needs to be balanced. It's going to be a very important priority for me to make sure that we have parents who speak languages other than English as part of the strategic committee. That's thus far.
Between November and June?
What?
Between November and June?
All of this? No, the work that you will be doing will be January through April once in a while, unless you want to make it go faster. We'll talk more about that. It's a good clarification. How are we going to analyze? We're going to have lots and lots of data to look at, look at the trends. What are the anomalies? What new learning might we, might we be presented to us that we haven't thought about before? So identifying priorities. As the discussions get rich and we look at the data and we look at trends and we look at anomalies and we look at your historical perspective and what you bring to the table, we'll have categories, themes, and trends that begin to emerge. While I don't know what those are going to be yet for Mount Angel, I could share with you what they were in Sweet Home. What emerged after a month of really digging through data and having conversations was academic achievement, driving citizen opportunities, partnerships between schools and the community, facilities. And then there was a whole parking lot of other topics that didn't quite fit in anything else, but were nonetheless important. And will begin to emerge, and it will be, it will be easy to identify what the priorities are going to be.
And Rachel, before you go on, this is a good opportunity for me to say, think back to collaborative governance definition. Remember the phrase, learn and lead together. What Rachel just described over a couple of months' time, looking at data, having conversations, is learning together. And then what starts to emerge is the shared focus. When you go back to that definition, it was just described here, you're leading and learning. And what emerges, what we're calling priorities on the screen, is this shared focus. So just on the opportunity to connect back to that definition, because this is absolutely kind of the embodiment of that, so. And really good examples of what we mean by priorities too. I've seen similar things in other districts. And a little later on in the presentation, I'll share a little bit about my own experience in South of Quah. But that's, that's more towards the end. But those are really good kind of examples of priorities that emerge from that kind of conversation. I've seen similar things.
One, a comment more than a question or something else. At Clackamas County, one of the big pieces of our strategic planning is environmental scanning and looking ahead, seeing what the issues are that we know maybe aren't reflective of past data or today's data. But what's really changing and what do we know that if we don't address it, it's going to be bad for us? So I'm just curious, will the future, will like, you know, future issues or issues that you know are coming, is that part of this?
It is, it is. Thank you for asking that. But some of the questions that we're going to be asking on the survey will be pulling that.
So now in terms of data, what are you worried about?
Okay.
Excuse me, but was, was what you just did there, Shari, the it seems to me that we've been, we're told like, this is going to happen in 2024, and this is going to happen in 2026. Why ODE has those kind of things that they're going to drive down. Is that, are you saying that we're going to see that and that's going to be part of what we're looking at when we come up with these strategic, a strategic plan?
That's an intriguing question. Thank you for asking it. I would not say specifically, but what if we find out that 15% of our parents are worried about something that's coming down from ODE in three years?
And, and, and it seems to me, I don't, I don't remember what it was, but it seems to, I know they're COVID. I've only been here, it seems, since COVID. But it seems that ODE said, this is going to happen in, oh, it's, part of it was the getting the annual readouts on standards and how our people did and where they are. Load up, load up, load up. And I don't know when that's going to come back, but that's an example of, they've said, we're going to bring that back in this year. And I think there's other things that they're going to be requiring of us. And I also believe that there's funding things, funding things that have stopped or funding things that will start. And I think that those in, in the, I don't know how much I can strategize on that plan, but it, it's important.
I find those are perfect examples of monitoring. And if you go back to those football pictures, some of what you're saying are big game types of data.
Right.
Which has its place. But just as we would never make an evaluative decision about a student's progress based on one snapshot, we want to get as many snapshots as we can of scrimmages or practices. So it has its place, but I would say it wouldn't lead. Steve?
And, and for the board, you're really going to look at more big game data.
Yeah.
Because you're going to do that less frequently than Rachel and her team. So I love the metaphors and the big game and the weekly games and then the daily practices, but the board in their monitoring will be looking at more of the big picture data. But the answer, Sherry's observation, Sherry's observation and John's, and we'll talk about this more later this evening, is for, one of your roles, as well as Rachel's, is to monitor. Right? Rachel monitors the plan, the details, the operations. Right? The board monitors the direction. What you see right there is called strategic direction. That slide embodies what we call direction. The areas of focus, the priorities. So there will come a time or when you will choose what data is important to you for this area of focus. What do you want to look at? And John, part of that conversation is not just looking backwards, but looking forward as you monitor. Great. And when you monitor, you don't do it in isolation, you do it alongside Rachel and her staff. Because you need their expertise, you need to ask them those questions. So we're going to talk more about monitoring, so I won't get off here. But yes, monitoring is looking at where we've been, but is where we're going is just as important. So, good.
Good conversation. Are there thoughts? No? Okay, I like it. Now to add just a little bit of humor. So when you look at this framework, I know I've shared this with some of my colleagues over the years because I've been applying this to my work for at least 15 years. Mission is one of the things that people look at and go, oh, mission statement. So did someone say mission? And so here's a little humor for you. Okay, it's time to brainstorm our mission statement. Or for those of you who prefer Mabel here will be standing by to poke you in the eye with a sharp stick. It's not always the funnest process for a lot of people. Here's another one. I don't know, let's just have a frame and throw some cliches in there and a few verbs and a value maybe. And then we have a mission statement. And that is not what this process is about. And so I just wanted to assure you, this is a meaningful, rich, deep discussion, sort of a process. And so when we look at applying the framework, yeah, we use the label mission, but what we're really going to discuss is not building a nice couple of sentences, but talking about why our schools exist and what is our purpose. And we talk about vision, but sometimes people wonder, well, what's that about? What's the difference between a mission and a vision? And how do you write them? Well, you've got, you know, what's our purpose? But then you really need to talk about what do we, what must our district become in order to accomplish the purpose? Values for me in my 36 years, this has been the one thing where initiatives fail in my own experiences, watching bigger picture things, projects that have happened. Because there is often not enough discussion around what we're going to agree to act on in order to get to the accomplishments. How are we going to agree to behave? This is a really important piece of the work. And that's again, this work is really important for you to build your work. But then I'm drawing a line here. Because when we look at goals and how we're going to mark progress, that's where Steve was saying, there's a little bit of a, you know, we'll walk our, or work alongside each other, but there are some differences in the work. Does that make sense so far? Okay. So those steps that I just talked about, that's the first three columns of the framework. That's you right there. If you want to be in other parts of this process and eight or nine months of work, knock yourselves out. I'm not going to tell you no, but I think you all have a lot of things going in your life other than this. Being able to mark our progress will be different for the board than it will be for the district. You don't see a star here for that reason. So being able to complete the framework is the next piece of this, of really focusing in on those goals, implementing strategies, implementing specific tasks that again, support those strategies, determining timelines, resources, ensuring outcomes that we actually can measure and making sure that our goals that are established are aligned with the priorities of the plan. This is where we can have some good discussion, I think, especially based on what Steve had shared at the beginning of the presentation. For the district, we'll mark our progress through developing district goals. I'm aiming for April and then early May. And then developing school goals, department goals. That's something that you had, has necessarily in a, in a more formal monitoring plan, but that's something I'm going to be requiring of departments and schools next year. Whereas marking your progress, adopting the plan in May is what we're aiming for. And board goals in June. Steve, if you want to comment on there?
Do you adopt the plan in May? My coaching would be not to formally adopt it by the board. Because once adopted by the board can only be changed by the board. And because it's so operational and you may need to change pieces of it. I would, I would inform the board. What I would adopt is the priorities of the strategic direction. So that's the only small correction that I would make there. And because it's operational and you have to be able to change it on the fly is the only reason I say that. Other than that, it beautifully lays out, and the other piece, the Rachel that I've talked about is in the, the school board research supports this, is board, once you set your strategic direction, your priorities, you should support those. And so you're doing this in advance of or kind of simultaneously with your budgeting process in the spring. And so having this done at that time so that you can create fiscal support around those will be important. So, you know, given how you've laid it out, you and I talked about that it's important to have this done prior to.
I'm so appreciative of Steve being here tonight. I've had a lot of experience in strategic planning, but not that next step with board development. And so this was a perfect example of why it's good that we're tag teaming it tonight.
Rachel?
Yes, sir.
On goals, how do we mark progress? The last piece, develop school and department goal. That's like St. Mary's, M A H S. That's what a school means here?
Yes. And while they do report to you right now quarterly through a verbal report that you have in your board packet as well, they're going to have an entire plan where they're looking at data and providing that to me on a quarterly basis so that I can use that data to provide a written report to you.
And that isn't happening right now, right? Right? And is this a pretty good type of break?
Yes, sir, it's been one hour.
Exactly, on the, on the nose.
10 minutes, five minutes, how much, much time would you like?
Quite a bit.
Five seconds.
Five?
Thank you. I'm impressed, it's, it's 7:06. Well done, well done.
Another part of the, the how process that brings out really interesting perspectives is what it's supposed to look like.
Yeah.
People have very strong opinions about that. If you want to be part of that process, I'm just telling you, it gets messy here. But it is an important part because it needs to be visually appealing and it needs to be something that people want to own and can resonate with.
Those also have to be something that is easy to market to, like, people that aren't necessarily as bought in or as, not bought in, as familiar with school. So like citizens that, you threw out the example earlier, it doesn't just have to be citizens who have somebody in the school. People have paid into the school before, for a long time, people have had their property here. And people that are, it's, it's very common to have people be proud of having graduated here and having had their children here, et cetera. Those people aren't staying current on computers, they're not staying current on verbiage, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So part of, I don't know how to say it other than marketing, is when we develop something, the how, it has to be able to be readable for many markets.
It's such a good point. And as you were talking, what I visualized in my head was that this is also going to converge with the long range facility planning work and how we work to hopefully pass a bond. I mean, it all will start coming together in how we communicate. Are we communicating in a user-friendly way?
If I, if you'd allow me to piggyback on this, it's not about strategic plan, but it's about communication of the strategic plan and communication with the citizenry. Old people, myself included, who have not had a lot of computer requirements in their life. And they now have moved away from an office environment where they had support for getting at computers. When they get their kid over there or their grandkid to show them a onesie on the computer, those that would ask to get into our school board thing and see what's going on, we always tell them, look on the school, look on the school page, look on the school page. But, but truly, if you tell my wife to look on the school page, you may as well have done it in Japanese because she doesn't, she's not going to give it. She's not stupid. My wife is really, really, despite having married me, my wife is extremely smart.
She just may not have great judgment.
I mean, and that's all that counts. The, but having something, that's why I try to appeal about keeping that site lively and, and readable and easy. Because people are reading that whether we know it or not, and we don't. The people that are only reading it two or three times a year, they're as important as the mom who reads it every day. Because they, that, that mom or that grandma that only reads it three or four times a year, she is going to say something. And, and when she talks, she talks to her children, neighbors, et cetera. Anyhow, this is, I just wanted to push again, that what we're doing, and I've, I've seen great, not good, great movement on that face page in the last four months. I like what we're doing with that. But it's, I think it's really important that we, that that thing be, you know who the audience is that's reading it. And I think it's the same audience that we're trying to get a plan to.
You think of the towers and all the people that vote, you know, when you're thinking of the body.
Thank you.
I mean, they're the kind of people, there, there are some that are probably really savvy on the computer and they do have a, I think it's up on the seventh floor or sixth floor, my, a computer area that they can do it. They, they don't all have computers and such, and that's going to be something that we have to make it, whether it's this or the strategic plan, whatever, but concerted effort to get that information to them, it's going to be on paper rather than say necessarily, you know, on a website or something or a presentation or some, something like that.
Yeah, absolutely. I like your point very much. Anyone else want to contribute to that? Okay. Thank you, John. So this is the last part of the how in that very long list of how we're going to work through this. And this is a quote from Kevin Knutson, who's, he just happens to be someone who works on strategic plans. But I like what he had to say and it's very simple. The main cause of failing to execute strategic plans is a lack of follow-through. A manager, administrator or superintendent may be instrumental in developing the plan. But unless they thread it into the management processes on a daily basis, it becomes the proverbial plan on the shelf. And I don't know about you, but in more than three decades of work at school districts, I've seen a lot of thick notebooks of strategic plans that people can't remember where they are or what's even in there. And there's good work in there in those notebooks. It's just that maybe not everybody needs to see all of that. Maybe what they need to see is this.
Well, we did get the check in the box during the audit for having one.
Yeah, here you go. Good to have that. It has its place, has its place. Steve, you look like you want to say something.
Well, thank you, because for, you can make sure this happens. Now, I have all the confidence in the world Rachel's going to do this. And the way this is written is really for the operational management level. Where you don't notice the terminology and so forth and so on. 95% of the boards fail here. Even if I can get them to get district priorities, good focus, good alignment with their superintendent, they stop. And it won't be this year's work, it'll be more into next year's work. But there is a role for the board to monitor. Now, it's, it's not really at the management level, it's not daily like Rachel will do. Yours is bigger picture, it's more periodic, it's more like we used the metaphor earlier, it's more the big game. For my school district, when I was superintendent, we had three critical meetings a year where we sat with staff, we looked at our priorities and we looked at key data. And the fact that the board sat alongside elbow to elbow with staff and talked about kids and talked about student achievement held the entire system accountable. So there is a role for you, I won't go into that right now, but you will hear we, us, that'll be our mantra. Again, this year it's about getting the plan developed, what is the focus? But next year, your critical work will be to monitor. Not just in the way that I described, but also periodically you'll get reports from Rachel on her end of the strategic plan. So you're monitoring the strategic direction. You're not, you're not monitoring the strategic plan. But you are getting periodic reports. So more about that to come, but this does apply not only to Rachel, but also to you.
I thank you very much. And one of the reasons I'm appreciating Steve being here tonight is again, what I shared with you earlier. I don't have that next step experience that he does. So we make a great team, I appreciate you saying that. This next piece is really operationally how as a district, we will be monitoring the progress. Again, I'll be having annual school and department monitoring plans where they provide me with quarterly updates. I can extrapolate that information and put it in a written quarterly superintendent report for you. You can use that as part of my evaluation. But I also want to make sure that this last piece is important to me and I'm, I'm good with a spinoff other than a website. But we really owe it to our community over the next five years to continuously update them on how we are doing. And one of the things we could consider doing as an example would be on the website or another form. And one of the things we could consider doing as an example would be on the website or another format. What are four examples or five examples of how we're hitting priorities and update that on the website or other media a couple of times a year at least, so that they know we haven't forgotten about it.
And, and in doing that, you serve up that great big beach ball by the year before that, having asked them, "What is it that, what is it you'd like to see come out?" And giving them four or five beach balls to hit at. And then they're telling us what they want to see, we know what they're looking at, and we can put it in a format that gives to their eyes, additionally and more importantly, it gives the students, the teachers, the principals, and superintendent board a vision of what it is that they think they want to see. That doesn't mean that they're right. This means that they are part of us, we are, we're trying to make a community. I believe that if we do that, something akin to that, those thirty-three people that took a powder on the district, we can have twenty-eight of them back. And that, I think people left because they didn't understand and they didn't feel like they could talk to someone. And I think that when we, I know that when we do that, people feel like they got not just heard, but not, you know, the thing, that they're gonna feel like the initiator of a conversation and that we were responding to them. And that's gonna, that's gonna drive that whole thing back together. And I really believe that we're, we're on that track.
Thank you, sir. Good thoughts. We're in the last part, part three, which is using the magnifying glass, getting down and dirty with what this really means just tightly for the next eight months, phases and timelines. So what I've done is instead of taking all those things, I've chunked them out for you into five phases, and that helps my head too. And so we're establishing a process of beginning to communicate stakeholder input, applying the framework, capturing the conversations, and board district and school response. So there are only a few slides left. Phase one, establishing the process and begin communicating. It actually, I think, started in September when I gave you a proposed draft of, of what we might do, but also tonight, we've got our board work session. We're establishing a framework tonight because I'm sharing with you my intent to move forward with that framework for this process. The administrators need to be trained. We've got to let our stakeholders know sooner rather than later. What's coming? There's a survey and a community forum coming, and we need to let them know in newsletters, at Blackboard, Facebook, website, staff meetings, Monday notes, staff emails, whatever it takes, right? And as, if you think of other ideas, I want to know what they are. We want to make sure that we are recruiting stakeholders for the strategic, strategic plan committee, again, getting the right people in the room so that it's inclusive. Make sense? Yep. Phase two, let's get some input. Community survey, I'm proposing that it be open from November ninth to December third, almost a month. Community forum, December fourteenth, although I have to admit the winter sports calendar was not online yet from Moffitt when I put this in, so I don't know what, what the impact might be, there might be some shifting there. And I want to make sure I get to the high school student leadership team or class in December. What I've found in my previous work with strategic planning and higher tools in a suite home is that students have a lot of great things to say, and they care very deeply about their district. They care very deeply about their district and their community, and they want to be heard. Phase three, there you go, there's your star down there in the corner. Committee meetings could be four total, January through April, could be less than that with longer meetings. It's, we can start working through that, but tonight I just wanted you to know that that's what I'm asking of you. We're clear about our purpose, we're clear about our process, and we remain true to the framework.
Now, Rachel, when you say the star, are these gonna be board work sessions that include the strategic plan committee? Or do you want two or one or two board members on the committee? What's your?
Thank you for asking that. I haven't really, my previous experience has not been work sessions, they've actually been separate.
It's a separate committee, so only two, two, we can't have a core of the board of the committee. I would, I would, I mean, maybe we could, but I don't think we.
That's a very good call.
Should, thank you.
So.
We'll find some clarity around that.
Thank you for pointing that out.
And if you want the whole board involved with all of them, then it would have, I would recommend it being a board work session with the focus thing, the strategic plan thing.
Thank you, because I was gonna, I was gonna thank you for the invitation. She, she saw, she saw, she can read my body language. She knows. My encouragement here is to make it whole board. Whole board, make it a work session, it's fine if the public wants to come. I can certainly help if you would like, in terms of the facilitation of this piece, because I do this piece all the time, but make it whole board.
That's what I might, that's where I, my preference went to. I just wanted to talk about.
Right, no, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought it up, because here, I will stand up because I can't, I gotta move around. Prior to this, right, Rachel, is where a lot of the survey work is done, the data's been, been gathered, and what I think I understand about this part of the process, so Rachel, please correct me. This is where that information gets shared, and this is where you start looking at the data. So go back to your collaborative governance definition for a moment and lead and learn together. That's whole board work. And so you're looking at the data, and you're gonna want to watch what themes emerge. And so at this point in time, you board, this is what you're going to ultimately approve, is what emerges out of this as what we're calling priorities. Because that's what you will sanction, because that won't change. Whereas a moment ago, you heard me advocate for the board not to adopt the strategic plan, because that's an operating plan. And Rachel needs the ability to change that. But what doesn't change is when we all agree and the board approves, this is the strategic direction. So when I look at this, this says strategic direction emerges. And so for that reason, I would say it's a whole board activity. And again, when the time comes, Rachel, whatever role you want me to play there, I'm happy to either assist behind the scenes or join you or whatever that looks like. But for myself and, and work we did at South Unqua, this is where it's, our culture started to change. And something else I'll describe in just a moment, but yeah, please make this a whole board activity with whomever you want to bring to the, to the table in terms of your team.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other clarification or questions on this?
And I, and I would just say, I see value considering both, considering not having all five of us involved. When all five of us are involved, it could be that we're seen as still leading it and looking to us to, to, to lead and, and so. And having all five of us involved with a diverse committee, we can commit to allowing.
I told you this would happen.
Allowing them.
You are leading it.
Well.
No, this is yours, board.
We are.
No, 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 please, please forgive me. This, this is you. This is where you exert your leadership. I get that Rachel's doing this, putting it together, and I told you in the beginning, you know, this is kind of getting interwoven. But Jerry, please, this is your opportunity.
And it's our opportunity to listen a lot and.
Agreed, agreed. You're not gonna do this.
And that's where I, that's where I was trying to go, because saying, if I could finish, saying that if all five of us are there, we'll get to the point where people are more confident, comfortable, taking over and leading the discussions and whatnot. I just, I want to be thoughtful about not overpowering the discussion with my voice.
And with, no, no, no.
That's where I was going.
No, I completely agree. Sorry, I probably overreacted.
And that's what I meant. I don't want to lead every discussion with my opinion because I'm the board chair. And so that's where I was going.
Right, but this is how we avoid that, is how we set it up in terms of facilitation.
That's why I said I see value in both, yes, of that. And we can design it effectively in either, any way we land. I think, I know we can design it effectively to have that diversity and that balance of voices heard. And I'm looking forward to just listening a lot and so looking at what people have.
Again, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, we're more on the same page than not on the same page. I just, I just. Yeah.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, grading of some things and separating of others and.
Well, ideally, how I facilitated these in the past, and, and, again, it's just one way to do it, but it, it, it's putting board members in charge of small groups that have a cross-section of people in them and the facilitator then, through guiding questions. And in those small group conversations, then you don't get that dominance of voice per se.
And it'll be interesting to see how many we are able to recruit and retain for every meeting. And so, yeah, it's that and followed through, and, and, you know, and I'm not assuming people aren't gonna show up and we're gonna have a hard time recruiting a, a nice number. Could be the reality, we'll see.
Thanks. Good discussions, yeah. So we're so close here, folks. Phase four, capturing the conversation and the process. This is ad hoc committee work that is not, not you, but it's people being fussy about designing things and colors and all those kinds of things that you probably want to step away from. I wouldn't choose to do it if I didn't have to, but it, it's important to people to be able to do that. And then phase five, I guess this will create some good discussion since we've, we've talked about changing some things here. Board, district, school response. How are each of those different areas going to respond to what we have for priorities? Who's doing what goals? How do they align? Development of department and school monitoring plans would be taking place. We've talked about no board approval of the strategic plan per se, but looking at, if I'm understanding you right, Steve, approval of the priorities before the.
I'd use the word direction, right? I would just replace plan with direction.
Okay.
And then I would ask you to, in the second bullet, development of department, school, and board monitoring plans, because they will all look different. And that would be a really good time, and if that, you know, date works for, for folks, a board work session in June, to do exactly that. Because you want to leave the end of this year, one, having built a budget based on your new priorities, and then have a really solid plan of how the board is gonna monitor their piece of this. Now, you should know how Rachel is going to monitor her part of it, but knowing and directing, of course, are two different things, but phase five is a really good time for the board to think strategically about how they're gonna monitor.
Other comments or response to that?
Just looking at the date, the June thirteenth, it's a regular board meeting as well, so having a work session at the same night.
We know.
Yeah, lovely, lovely.
Yeah, yeah.
I would be looking at that too.
And that's my husband's birthday, so I don't know if I want to be, you know, working till ten o'clock at night, or maybe that's his preference, so I would be supportive of.
I think we can be open to finding times that are board-friendly.
Early, 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 early-ish June, yeah, yeah.
Other thoughts? Okay, I just have one question. You've learned, I think, a little bit more about who I am and what I'm passionate about as, as a leader, and what I try and work on every day in my leadership. Hopefully, you've learned more about where I'm wanting to take this, of what the end results will be for me that will benefit you. But I'd really like to know one takeaway from this evening from each of you. And also to ask questions of what, what I didn't share. Is there a lot of details I did not share?
We call it take, I like where you started. Okay, so now I know as a board member, these are the specific things that I'm gonna help be responsible for, that, you know, we have to do rather than the whole overall thing, because looking at all this, you had started, those are indicated, you know, what our specific role is, that you kind of walk away from here going, "Oh my gosh, this is gonna be so much time." So that was appreciated.
Thank you.
Like your statement about with a good leader telling you what you need to, what he's gonna do, you'll know what your path is. With what you did here tonight was, this is my band. I don't, it, it's always great when the leader does it, but truly, in almost, in most organizations, if schmuck a telly or the manager or the boss or the owner, it doesn't matter. If any one of those people comes out and says, "This is what I do, this is my band", it puts everyone else into a sit thinking systemically and looking at a bigger picture. I thought that your piece tonight of, "This is what I say, ground rules, I don't know, ground rules, that's a fair word, groundwork, the playing field, this is what I want everybody to be apprised of together", I thought this came out very good, and I liked that we were all here and everybody agreed to, yes, common interest, common language. I get it.
Thank you.
Well, I'm walking away tonight with better understanding of what's coming, and that's leading to more confidence and optimism for me.
My question would be, given the year's worth of work that you, we all have ahead of us, do you feel your staff has the resources to begin going down this road on top of everything that goes on today?
What I, what I'm intrigued with about that question is that it's completely unknown, because the staffs don't even know.
I mean, just your, your gut feeling is, there's, there's a lot of work here, right?
Yeah.
And it's not all going to be done by you or us or any one person. Do we have enough there to make it all happen in your best estimate?
My best estimate is that, because I'm going to be coming to staff instead of expecting them to come to me to do visits with them and tell them about it, they can participate in the survey at home. We can have a very small selection of staff of administrative license and classified for the committee, and we'll always find a couple of people who are very passionate. And so I feel optimistic about it. Thank you.
I like the timelines set out like this, there we go. I like the inclusion part, and it's like going after a broad range of people to represent on the committee, specifically those that maybe are underrepresented in, in typical strategic planning committees. So that's what I really, really like.
Other thoughts for each other? Or other comments, just, and Steve, you as well. Is that, is there a takeaway you have from this evening?
The takeaway for me and slash comment is while different, similar to what we did in, in South Unqua. Because it was this process of collaboration, that's what's common here. Rachel and I will come at it in two different ways, but it was these conversations with the board structured in such a way, even just a short debate that you and I had, Jerry, you know what I mean? Fundamentally changed the culture of that district. And, and it was a good district to begin with, so I'm not trying to say they were. And, and it was a good district to begin with. So I'm not trying to say they were really, really bad and they suddenly became good. But because we did things differently and we made things about collaboration, interactions, relationships. I mean, board members talking to teachers for the first time, you know, that fundamentally changed the culture. And so that's what you're going to experience here. And so I guess that's my takeaway as I go back to that. Thankful for being a part of this. And again, want to continue to serve in any way that I can. But just as you go down this path, know a couple of things. It will take you multiple years. This is just the foundation. Once you get into the monitoring piece, it will take you two to three years. And so it's a real long-range time of affect. But holy cow, it will have a positive impact on kids. My one regret as superintendent, that we were doing this, we were about four years in. And it was the year they fundamentally changed all state, all state tests. And so things were starting to take up. I mean, all the indicators were moving in the positive, in the right way. And they fundamentally changed the test so much that I couldn't compare results from one year to the next and literally had to start over in terms of that. But I know that we were making a fundamental impact on, on kids. So yeah, that, that's my, my takeaway is I'm just kind of going back to, holy cow, I remember where you're sitting right now, giving a very similar kind of overview to my board. And so kudos to all of you for doing this. Thanks for letting me be a part of this.
Thank you for being here tonight. And thank you to the five of you for being here tonight. I value you so much, not only your time, but who you are as opinion leaders and important stakeholders and leaders. And I'm really, really excited to be doing this work. I'm really, and hopefully this is also giving you a better sense of who I am, a deeper sense of who I am as a leader as well. Thank you. And I was thinking, just to end this, we have a board meeting November ninth, I believe, or the eighth. Was it the seventh? It's, uh, it's coming up.
It's November eighth.
November eighth. So I was thinking of bringing to you, just for your, your information, what the survey is going to look like, because it's going to come out the very next day. I thought you might be interested in that. Thank you, everybody. And look at it, it's looking at the time.
Yeah, was there something else you were going to go over?
No.
No. I, I, let's just save that for later down the road. I was just going to describe a little bit more about what the monitoring might look like. And but I, I, I think we're good. No, I, I think you get a sense of what Rachel's trying to do and the level of collaboration. I think when it gets closer, depending on what my role might be in January, that kind of interaction and collaboration, we can talk more about that. No, you, you get a real gist of where you're going. So I think I'll stop there, not try to fill your head too much in one night.
And it's earlier than mine.
I will come back to at some point in time, probably later in the year, for you to take that self-assessment, to look at what your own strengths and areas of growth are, and then create board goals around those and in support of. It's good modeling for the rest of your staff to say, yes, we evaluate the work that we do. We created some goals that now support the district priorities. And so that work is much later in the spring. But it'll be back to those twelve standards. It'll be based on that balanced governance piece. I very much, when I went to South Unqua, I had a board that was very hands-off. And I had to, almost at times, drag them kicking and screaming into, but you've got to do this. And in the end, it was worth it. And yeah, I'm not saying that's where you guys are at, because I, I have a sense that you're much more balanced than what my board was. But there is a very active, meaningful role for the board in student achievement. And we talked about it tonight, so. Good stuff. But no, I was, I was really here just in support of Rachel and her process of getting that kickoff in terms of the transition plan. I think that piece of it has pretty much come to a close. I'd have to look at the hours. I don't know where we're at with our hours. But as you, Rachel, continue in this process, you know, whatever support that you would like to have, just please let me know.
Good. Anybody else have anything to say before I do our, we adjourn?